Good morning and welcome to the Hawaii State Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube. This is our 9:30 a.m. agenda. I'd like to note for the audience and everyone online that there are multiple agendas that we will be convening in this space today. All of them are being streamed live on YouTube. In the unlikely event that we experience technical difficulties and need to abruptly end, we will reconvene to address any outstanding business on Monday, February 10th, 2025, at 9:36 a.m. in this room 229, and a notice will be posted on the legislature's website. This hearing is a 90-minute hearing. There are a number of different agendas. And so, in the CPN committee, we observe a two-minute testimony time limit, and the reason for that is that we've received your written testimony, we've reviewed that testimony, and so while you are free to use the two minutes, we would recommend you use them to clarify or emphasize your written remarks rather than reading the entirety of those remarks verbatim. I know it can be stressful to testify in front of the Senate, so you're free to use your notes, but we would just ask, especially if you're online, do not read word for word the entirety of your testimony because we've already received it and reviewed it. And on that, I will yield to my co-chair from the Waterline Committee for our first bill.
So we kind of opened already, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Good morning. Aloha. This is Aloha Friday. The Committees on Water and Land and Commerce and Consumer Protection is on its Friday's agenda, February 7th, in room 229, and at 9:30. And morning, members. You're all ready to rumble. We'll start with SB 11. And this is relating to vegetation management near the utility lines. It requires the Department of Land and Natural Resources to create and annually update a wildfire hazard map. It requires private and public property owners to trim grasses within certain proximities of public right-of-way and utility lines. It authorizes electric utility companies to enter private or public property to trim or remove hazardous vegetation, and this measure also makes appropriations. Michael Walker, here today for DLNR. Aloha.
Aloha, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. My name is Michael Walker. I serve as the Department of Land and Natural Resources, Division of Forestry and Wildlife, statewide fire protection forester. The department has provided written testimony, providing comments on the measure, and I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. Also, I'm sorry, I forgot. Housekeeping announcements, particularly those on Zoom as well. And we'd like to continue our recommendation for including those on Zoom, and we ask that you stand on your written testimony if your oral testimony is different from your written testimony. The time limit for each testifier will be two minutes, and the hearing notice and copies of the bills and testimony can be found on our legislature's website. The video stream of this hearing can be found on the Senate's YouTube channel. However, with regards to the particular testimonies of those that will be directly involved with this issue, the chairs wouldn't mind that members of the committee that you can call in, call upon, those testifying with recommendations as well, a little more time for the committee members as well. Okay? Michael Angelo, DCCA. Aloha.
Aloha. Morning, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. We're going to stand on our written testimony, providing comments. I did want to provide some additional context to this. I feel obligated to provide some incidents that happened at my own residence regarding wildfire, well, fire safety. On two incidents, one, early in the morning, and it emphasizes that this is a whole of society problem. We had a utility pole with climbing vines on it. There was a drop-down from the service transformer that failed, and we saw large sparking. The utility pole actually caught on fire. Fortunately, it was during wet conditions. The fire department was able to respond, handle the matter, and the utility promptly fixed the issue. But there's still climbing vines there. They're dry. If that was during drier conditions, those could have easily ignited, ignited the shrubs below that were planted around the, around the utility pole by the neighbors. There's a second incident, a few months later, again, fortunately during wet conditions, where a stand of bamboo laid on top of the, during high winds, laid on top of the distribution side, so the low voltage side, low energy, but that doesn't mean that there's not a lot of energy coming through those lines. Sparks coming up and down the lines. A video, if anybody would like to see it, throwing sparks out. So, again, another problem, very high importance, and I feel obligated to share that. And it would be, I think, a big challenge with this is figuring out who's responsible for what. There's legal aspects to be thought through. I appreciate the committee taking this up, and I think this is a whole society thing that's critically important. Thank you.
We thank you for your presence as well. And members, any questions you have, please let us know. You, let's see, Public PUC? And you're not Leo?
No.
State your name, please.
I'm Jessica Simon. I'm an analyst at the PUC. I stand on the commission's written testimony, and I'm available for questions.
Okay. Mahalo. IBW, Ika Pokowski?
Morning, chairs, vice chairs, committee members. IBW 1260 stands on its written testimony in support of the amendments.
Okay. Mahalo. Hawaiian Electric. Good morning, Wendy.
Good morning. Good morning, chairs, vice chairs, and members of the committee. My name is Wendy Oda, and I'm here on behalf of Hawaiian Electric. We submitted written testimony, but I would like to add to our testimony.
Sure.
Hawaiian Electric understands the community's continued concerns about wildfire risk and believes that this bill is a first step in addressing their concerns and creating a framework for moving forward in helping to address public safety and system reliability. We would like to recommend that language changes be added to allow the utilities to enter public and private property without notification or after-the-fact notification where it is determined that wildfire risk is imminent. Additionally, as utilities, we do our best to determine when hazardous vegetation needs to be trimmed or removed. We recommend language be added to limit liability against the utilities companies, the utility companies who perform, who don't perform vegetation management actions. Thank you for the opportunity to add to our testimony, and I'm here to take any questions.
Thank you. And members, their recommendation is on Wendy's testimony on page four. Anything else to add to those two? Okay. Thank you very much. Namik, Christian Rataj? And in opposition, Lahaina Strong, David Beisel from KIUC with comments, and Jeff Mikulina in support, as well as Lahaina Strong. Anyone else wishes to speak to SB 11? Members, any questions you'd like to add? None? Okay, let's proceed then to SB 1561. DLNR, Michael?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committee. It's Michael Walker again with DLNR, Forestry and Wildlife. Just, we're going to stand on our testimony as provided, and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mahalo. IBW?
Chairs, vice chairs, committee members. IBW 1260 stands on its written testimony in support of the amendments.
Mahalo. Iko? Actually, it's all of the above. Hiko, Miko, and Hawaiian Electric. Okay.
Good morning again. So we submitted written testimony. Would like to add again to the testimony. My apologies, we were not able to provide you with our amendments earlier, so I believe we passed them out to you. The proposed amendments? Yes. The proposed amendments further define the landowner's responsibility for, regarding vegetation management. It further defines the enforcement steps and added language to provide a recovery mechanism for the utilities to recoup the additional vegetation management costs. We want to confirm our efforts to work with the PUC to develop standards and rules related to the vegetation management. And again, we believe this is a needed start to discussions on how we can address and continue to make progress to minimize the vegetation management risk. All right. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to take any questions.
I have a question.
Yes.
So with your comments to SB 1561?
Yes.
About the preference is the first one?
Yes, so we-
Okay, SB 11.
But- We've included in the amendments-
Okay.
-language from SB 11 into 1561 to address more, you know, defined terms on access and responsibility, and also for the recovery mechanism, and then also for how this will be, the non-compliance will be addressed. So it takes that language and puts it in this bill.
Okay.
From SB 11.
Okay. In the event that we keep SB 11, okay, would your amendments on 1561 work with the two paragraphs of recommendations for SB 11 be sufficient?
We believe it will, but we, again, we might want to take a look at what we might want to add from 1561, but we will, we believe that SB 11 is where we would stand by.
You would prefer. Okay, so not, nothing to do with the amendments you just talked about in 1561? Because if we decide, if I decide we're gonna defer 1561, so-
Chair?
What I'm saying-
Chair, it's obvious you prefer your bill as the vehicle, which I totally support. What, I could, for your consideration, maybe could I suggest that you take the framework of 1561 with the amendments within your bill SB 11, where it's similar or the same?
Yeah.
And defer, you can defer my bill.
Senator McKelvey, that's why I'm asking if she prefers some of the amendments in 1561 into this, but it has to match with your-
Correct. So we understand, we understand Senator McKelvey's concern.
Yes.
And we can take a look at what the proposal is, is, you know, to how we can make, if we want to bring in something from SB 1561 into SB 11.
No, no, I'm, yeah, I'm just trying to basically, for everybody, just focus in on one vehicle, 11, and so I think the thing is just, how can 1561 then play into 11 so there's one vehicle going forward?
So we can either use that one and put SB 11 into it, or we can look at SB 11 and add language from 1561. Whichever, whichever vehicle you choose is what we can work towards.
So do us a favor.
Yes.
Can you look at your amendments in 1561?
Yes.
And see what's pertinent that we can just put in to the amendments that you already recommend for SB 11?
Okay.
Okay. Because we'd like to make decisions. Today, we're all so busy, so we want to move the bills as soon as possible. So if you can work with staff over there, too?
Okay.
Wendy?
Okay. Thank you.
If you don't mind?
No problem.
Please.
No problem.
Yes. Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
Question, Wendy?
Yes. Senator Richards?
In your, in 11, you talked about granted access with approval or without approval or post-approval. I agree with you because sometimes you're going to see something that people, that you need to jump on soon.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we do that appropriately, that you have the tools to get done what you need to get done by still, still being sensitive to the property rights and the property. So I don't know how to characterize that, Chair, but I think you're right. If you see something wrong, you don't want to have to go through a long process to get access.
Yes.
But just want to be sensitive to that.
Yes, and that's why the notification or the after-the-fact notification, again, they may not be on the premises, and we need to do it. So we do want to provide them with information as to what we did, and that was the reason for that, to make sure that, you know, they are aware of what we're doing. Yes.
Yeah, I think about, not so much downtown, but the wide-open spaces, Big Island.
Yeah.
You may see something that the landowner doesn't see for whatever reason, so.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
And it's really eminent situations, I mean, in terms of that, so.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment as well as what we heard from DCCA, from Michael earlier about the shrubberies around that. But we also noted that there are some utility poles that already has trees growing out of it, and you'll find that on the Big Island as well. Like, there's, we see shrubbery, like even the trees really on top of the utility poles around. So hopefully, that is considered addressing, you know, the, whatever responsibilities you have, whether it's on the ground or on the utility pole or whatever.
Yes.
What about the lines that, you know, throughout our, throughout the state anyway, and not only Big Island, but we see a lot of shrubberies on the utility lines? But that's your jurisdiction as well?
So I think with regards to the utility lines, it could be on the telecommunications lines, or it could be on our other-
Right.
And so, again, right, we want to make sure that all utilities are also included because there is a responsibility, if it's at their level, they may be able to cut it before it reaches our level. And then with regards to the shrubbery on the ground, you know, we're not always, we don't have approval rights of what you can plant anywhere around your property. We have limited rights. So as the landowner, you can plant whatever you want, and that's why we ask that there is, you know, language in here that says owners are also responsible for. And again, Hawaiian Electric is not just the utility that has poles. We also, we also have land that we have to also maintain ourselves. So we understand both sides of the situation. But again, right, we, we have easements in some cases, and that's all we have. It's a limited right, and we can interfere.
And that's what the subject is today, is the easements as well.
Yes.
And just to note that in the counties, matter of fact, I think Hawaii County, I can speak for them, but they're neglecting it as well with enforcement. Because when you have development or you want to build a residential home, now the, the part of the development and the work sort of that comes with the development and the permitting approvals, the landowner or the residential, they do have to maintain their own properties where there's also the roadways. So, you know, somehow the enforcement has to be a partnership with everybody.
This is like, like they said, right, it involves everybody.
This is a new venture for all of us, and, you know, it's something that's going to take time, but certainly we appreciate the input from you folks.
First step.
Okay, all right. Any further questions for them? Otherwise, we'll go on to continue the testimonies from, for SB 1561. And Christian Rataj from NAMIC is in support. KIUC in opposition. Jeff Mikulina, Climate Advisory Team in support. Is there anyone else wishes to speak to SB 1561? Okay? Members, any questions with regards to 1561?
Yeah, I think we can go ahead.
Okay, all right. Okay, this then concludes IT. There was no one that signed up for Zoom, but just to confirm, is there somebody waiting on Zoom that has not been identified?
Nobody on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Then we'll go into decision-making at this point for the measures before both committees. Okay, all right. Okay, both committees, the Committee on Water and Land and the Committee on Consumer Protection is going into decision-making at this point in room 229. Chair's recommendation on SB 11 is to pass with amendments, and this is, we're going to take the recommendation from Hiko as well, and the additional comments made from 1561 on this measure as well. And we'll be defecting the date as well as, it also defines in this measure the line clearance, the tree, tree measures standards for supervision for the electrical lineman. We'll also defect the date to, let's see, 2050. Okay, we'll defect the date to June 1st, 2050. Okay. Any comments, members of the Committee on Water and Land? Hearing non-vice chair for the vote with amendments, Chair votes aye.
Okay, for the Committee on Water and Land, passing SB 11 with amendments, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Chang, please excuse Senator McKelvey.
Yes.
Senator Decourt.
Aye.
Madam Chair, recommendations adopted.
Okay, mahalo?
Thank you. CPN Committee, same recommendation, passing with amendments. Chair goes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
No.
Thank you. Your measure is adopted.
Okay, thank you. For SB 1561, Chair's recommendation is to defer. Okay, this concludes a joint morning meeting with the Water and Land and the Consumer Protection as well. And good morning, everybody. Aloha.
Okay, good morning and welcome. This is our Friday, February 7th, 2025, 9:35 a.m., Joint Committee Agenda in Conference Room 229 between the Senate Committees on Commerce, Consumer Protection, and our friends from the Committee on Labor and Technology. This is to hear SB 640 relating to artificial intelligence. This measure requires corporations, organizations, and individuals engaging in commercial transactions or trade practices to clearly and conspicuously notify consumers when the consumer is interacting with an artificial intelligence chatbot or a technology capable of mimicking human behaviors. It also authorizes private rights of action and establishes statutory penalties. First up, TechNet in opposition. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee and vice chairs as well. My name is Dylan Hoffman on behalf of TechNet, in respectful opposition to SB 640. Just want to emphasize a couple of points and otherwise stand on our written testimony. But first, TechNet and our members understand the need for consumers to be aware of their interactions with chatbots and for companies to provide disclosures around those uses. Many of our companies that have developed this technology and many more who build upon those tools are already providing those disclosures as a way to build trust, but also to ensure that there are no misunderstandings when using those tools. Our concerns mostly stem from the definitions of AI chatbot, which includes a couple of undefined terms. We think some more clarity is needed to tailor the bill to chatbots specifically and avoid applying to a wide range of technologies across various industries. We also strongly urge the committee to place sole enforcement authority with the AGU rather than using an overly punitive private right of action. So apart from that, stand on our testimony and appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. DCCA, Office of Consumer Protection with comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, while you're telling, you know, back up the Office of Consumer Protection. We will stand on our comments and will be, be available for questions.
Thank you. Chamber of Commerce, the comment, in opposition. Angela Young with comments? Okay, is there anyone else?
Hello?
Hi.
Okay.
We had you. If your audio is on, then please go ahead.
I don't want to turn on my video.
We, we would ask you to turn it on if-
Okay, all right.
Technically able to.
Okay, um, all right. Hello?
Okay, hi, good morning. Please go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to testify, just to briefly comment. The bill, as contemplated, outlines how artificial intelligence is bad for small businesses. And so, as it's written, it says, disclosure required. No corporation, organization, or individual engaging in a commercial transaction or trade practice of any kind shall use an artificial intelligence chatbox or other technology that is capable of mimicking human behavior and that engages in a textual or spoken conversation with a consumer, which could mislead or deceive a reasonable person to believe they are engaging with a natural person without first disclosing to the consumer that they're interacting with a chatbot or with a robot. So with small businesses in Hawaii, according to the Small Business Administration, 99.3% of all businesses in the state of Hawaii are small businesses, and technology and artificial intelligence helps small businesses streamline and expedite operations. So essentially, if small businesses, for example, like limited liability corporations cannot function with the assistance of artificial intelligence to get, for example, drag and drop on Canva, and for the artificial intelligence technology to capture and automate and streamline a function to do graphic design, to do advertisement, and then for the function to then display or to chat with the general public, then it's something that is very disent, it's a very disent, it's disent, it's a disadvantage to small businesses. So I think that the bill should consider the statutory limitations.
Thank you very much. That's all the registered testimony we've received on this measure, SB 640. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions?
Chair?
Senator McKelvey?
Yeah, just OCP. You know, I'm all for labeling things, you know, chatbots, but I think it's pretty self-evident to most people when you're dealing with a chatbot. That being said, the private cause of action, you know, I'm very concerned about that. I mean, do you think that, is that normally the tool that would be used, or do you think, you know, it's suggested it should just be regulatory to be enforced completely and not have a private cause of action in the bill?
Well, we're concerned about how OCP can enforce this measure. It's ambiguous as to who it applies to, and secondly, the remedies in it would be, could be challenged by someone, particularly the trouble damage portions of it. Let's say that someone has, is awarded $1,000 in compensatory damages, and the trouble damage should be three times that, it should be 3,000. So the way that statute is written is that a court can apportion the excess part of that to a party we don't know. It's not defined. So we're concerned about that part of enforcement.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, seeing, having previously conferred with the co-chair, we're prepared to make a recommendation, and it's to defer this measure. This is a whole, for me personally, kind of a scary concept that we're discussing, but it's a, I think, a valid attempt to try and address it. That's just not ready yet. So the recommendation is to defer. Okay? Thank you very much. Chris, I'm going to roll. Okay, good morning and welcome. This is our Friday, February 7th, 2025, 9:46 a.m. Agenda in Conference Room 229. This is- This is the Senate Committee on Commerce and Consumer Protection. This is an agenda to address measures that were previously heard, where we are prepared to make recommendations. And because there are a number of agendas that are scheduled for this time slot this morning, and we are behind schedule, I will defer the actual votes on these measures until the end of calendar recess. Good morning and welcome to our Friday, February 7th, 2025, 9:45 a.m., Agenda in Conference Room 229. This is a Joint Committee hearing between the Senate Committees on Commerce and Consumer Protection and Transportation and Culture and the Arts to hear two measures. I'd just like to note for everyone who's come in since we started at 9:30, we have multiple agendas in this 90-minute hearing time slot. There's a big deadline next week, so we're trying to get through these agendas and allow everyone the opportunity to testify, but also move these bills out and vote today so that they don't die next week. As such, in this committee, we observe a two-minute testimony limit, and the reason is, again, we're trying to keep things moving, and we've received written testimony and reviewed it. It's all available online for everyone to see. So when we call your name, we would encourage you to stand on your written remarks if you choose, but you can also use your two minutes to clarify or emphasize anything that you've written. Feel free to use the testimony, you know, because we go fast and it might be stressful, but we do recommend and ask that you not read the entirety of your written testimony verbatim, because we've already seen it. And on that, we'll move to the first measure, SB 454, relating to the rental motor vehicle surcharge tax. This measure requires the rental motor vehicle surcharge tax to be prorated if the vehicle is rented or leased for a portion of the day. First up, we have Tax Foundation of Hawaii with comments. Good morning.
Good morning. This is Jade McMillan on behalf of Tamaa Machika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We've submitted some comments on the measure, just pointing out that proposed changes would make the tax system fair. However, it would also become more complex, and the vehicle rental companies may need to take better record-keeping on their check-in and checkout times to be able to comply with this law, which they may have not done so in the past. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Department of Taxation offering comments. Thank you for standing on your testimony. Next, we have Enterprise Mobility offering comments. Thank you for standing on your testimony. That's all the registered testimony we've received. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Senator McKelvey?
I don't, not really a question, but more of a question mark. I don't see Department of Transportation's testified on this one. This involves a special highway fund, right, potentially? And it impacts this, impact that?
They must love it.
So, well, I mean, normally I love it too, but I just want to note now, maybe before the vote, that if that indeed impacts the special highway fund, it's a little hypocritical of me to be looking to increase the surcharge to fund the much-needed line of bypass north and then vote, cut my own throat. So if that's the case, I may have to go with reservations on it.
Valid and noted. This measure does have a referral to Ways and Means after, so hopefully they come then if they don't love it. Any other questions? Okay, then I'll yield to my co-chair.
All right, thanks. Moving on to Senate Bill 1272 relating to towing. Testifying first on this measure is DCCA.
Good morning, Department of DCCA. Department of DCCA, that's on its testimony, is giving comments.
Thank you. We have testimony also from the City and County of Honolulu in support. And the tow truck in opposition, a tow in paradise, in opposition in one individual. That is all the testimony we have in this measure. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward. Good afternoon. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. My name is George Grace. I'm in the towing business here in Hawaii called Pinky Toes Hawaii. And I want to start by saying that I'm not here to testify to eliminate competition on this bill. I strongly support it. We have a problem in the towing industry in Hawaii, and I think the City and County can back me up on that. They're already in support of this. It's going to grow. We have what in our industry we call pirates. And they don't follow the rules. They don't follow the guidelines that you need to have to be a successful or be in the towing business. First of all, nobody wants to call a tow truck. We got a bad name already. But when something happens, you got to call us. You already got a problem. But we recognize in the industry that there's companies out there that's towing your cars home to their residence and calling it storage, and you got to go and pick it up. They don't follow the statute. They charging rates that don't follow the statute. They don't provide the proper insurances or workbench comp insurance for the workers or even compensation. So building, having a licensing theory, it kind of sets the platform to better our industry and make things better for everyone, not only us in the towing business, but if you get your car towed, you being treated fair. You being treated the right way. This is our third year coming here, and I consider myself, ourselves professional in our industry, so we want to make differences. In order to make differences, we got to bring suggestions and some light on some of the problems that we get in our industry. And as, you know, last year, we're talking with the DCCA, they shared with us their powers is limited. By having a licensing on tow industries or tow companies, it helps them to now they have an avenue to go to someone to say, hey, okay, we got a problem here. How did this guy even get a license to tow if he's towing his cars to his grandmother's house and not answering the phone when he needed to pick up?
I just ask you to summarize.
That's it. I just kind of hope I made my point here, that we got to build on platform, and it starts with this licensing board. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Please come forward.
Good morning, everyone. Chairs, committee. My name is Jeanette Grace, and I'm also with Pinky Toes. I agree with what George says on everything, but I just want to add in that this is something that we should have had a long time ago. We go to tow shows and conventions every year, and we talk to people in different states to see what they do and what works for them. And I don't understand why our state doesn't have a similar thing. So having a tow authority is beneficial for everyone, not only for the state or the Office of Consumer Protection, but as well as the community who are having their vehicles towed. And like my husband said, nobody wants to be towed. It's either because your car is broken, or you're stalled on the side of the road, or you got into an accident. But the tow company that comes out to you, you want them to be a reputable company, and you want to know that you're not going to be ripped off or scammed or anything like that. You want to know that your vehicle that's being towed is covered by a company that has insurance, and there's going to be accountability. And if you want to come out and bail out your vehicle, you want to make sure that, number one, they're answering the phone. Number two, you know, you have methods of payment that you don't have to go out of your way to get it, and there's accountability here. So I am in support of having a tow authority. I think more conversation needs to be made about this whole matter, because there are questions about additional fees that's being charged. And being in business in Hawaii is tough as it is, no matter what it is that you do. So having to pay additional fees is something that we're all concerned about, but I think showing accountability for the tow companies in this industry is a plus, and I support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on SB 1272? All right, if not, are there any questions? Senator Richards?
Yeah, George? I'm actually glad both of you guys came in, because I wanted to hear from the industry. So am I understanding that you think the pirates that you talked about, the first way to start cleaning that up is if we have a licensing, so thereby that if they don't have their license, there's a way to go after them? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it's like assuring the community that that person is licensed to do business the proper way, has the storage yard to store your vehicle with security, which is a mandatory thing when you do work with the city. You got to have 24-hour security. It's part of the statute that you got to have an ATM machine on your property. You got to accept methods of payment. So a lot of these companies, they don't abide by it, and then they take their problem to the DCCA. Then the DCCA tries to go after them, and they're limited to what they can do. Then they label all the towing companies to be like that.
Okay, so from the towing industry, I'm hearing if we have a license, then because of that, we give more authority to DCCA to clean up some of this?
Exactly. It's actually a tool that they can use, you know? We're not opposed to, anybody wants to buy a tow truck, you can. You want to go into business? You can. You have it for a hobby? You just want to tow your own stuff? You can. Just put "not for hire" on your truck. And then that way, you're not causing any kind of problems or conflict with the towing authority. And as far as them regulating the ones that should or, you know, could be in business, then anybody can be in business, just get the license to do it.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Senator McKelvey?
No, so you want to understand this, you want to be treated as a licensed class within PVL, right? With DCL or that. So your members know that it's a self-funded program, so you're all going to have to pay fees no matter what. And it's going to be based upon the size, how many members are in the program is going to determine how much the fees are going to be to carry this program. Given that, don't you think maybe the idea of maybe having the City and County regulate it, where they have access to, say, property tax revenues and other things to fund this kind of program at their level?
Well, the reason why we came to the state was because the statute that's already written that the city follows comes from the state. And the city get enough problems trying to take care of their towing bill rate, I mean, their towing contract right now. Things like this actually helps them. You know, they're not, they're not the one that wrote the statute. The state wrote the statute.
I understand, but setting it up as a licensed class program is different than a statute. So it's going to be based on the program fees on you guys, just so you're aware of that, right?
Oh, yeah, totally aware. But we got to start somewhere.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, if not, go back over to the Chair. Or decision-making.
Okay, the, I think we're preparing. Okay, so the recommendation on the first measure, SB 454, is to pass with amendments. We will adopt the proposed amendments submitted by the Hawaii Department of Taxation and defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050, to further discussion. Members, any discussion on the recommendation?
Chair, we talked about it earlier about going with the reservations.
So noted. There are no other comments. Vice Chair for the vote, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey?
Reservations.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Owa?
No.
Thank you. Your measure is adopted.
Thank you. Thank you. TCA Committee, same recommendation. Is there any discussion?
Chair, on this one, I'm going to be voting with reservations. I have some concerns, but...
Oh, Senator Richards, this is...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
...to TCA voting, and then we go to the next bill.
Got it, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Acting Vice Chair?
Chair Lee?
Aye.
Senator Inoue? Excused. Senator Alefante?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Decourt?
No.
Chair, you have three ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. CPN, same recommendation, and I recognize Senator Richards.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I'm voting with reservations. I was weighing on this, but based upon industry and raise the concerns, I'm voting with reservations. I think it needs work, but I do support based upon what industry has said, so thank you, Chair.
Members, any other comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, the recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Senator Richards?
Reservations.
Senator Owa?
No.
Thank you. Your measure is adopted.
Oh, did you vote her? Yeah. I said same recommendation.
They're different recommendations.
Wait, we're on 1272, eh?
No, 1274.
Yeah, that's what I voted on.
Now we do 1244.
Yeah, we did 1244 first.
Yeah, we... Yeah, okay. Okay. Wait, wait, so 1272, sorry. I didn't even have the recommendation. Wait, 1272, we voted out, right?
No.
454.
Should I take a recess real quick?
Yeah, recess.
All right, thank you, everyone. Reconvening the Joint Committees on Consumer Protection and Commerce and Transportation and Culture and the Arts on our 9:45 a.m. agenda. Apologize for this late delay, just had to clear up. We're on Senate Bill 1272 relating to towing. Recommendation is to pass with amendments, and those amendments would be adopting the Office of Consumer Protections recommendation with regard to Section 3 specifying that counties cannot enact an ordinance that provides less consumer protections than state law. And then on page 2, line 6, change the language to read engage in the act of towing or vehicle immobilization without a valid towing license under this chapter. And then subsection 5, towing licenses, suspension revocation, change the language to add a number 5, or used a device with the intent to immobilize a parked vehicle. And then finally adding in a defective date. This goes on to judiciary and Ways and Means. Any discussion? If not, acting Vice Chair?
SB 1272, Committee on TCA. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair Lee?
Aye.
Vice Chair Inoue is excused. Senator Alefante?
Aye.
I vote aye. Senator Decourt?
Aye.
Chair, you have four ayes. Recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Thank you, adjourned.
Good morning and welcome. We're opening on our Friday, February 7th, 2025, 9:50 a.m., Agenda in Conference Room 229 to hear a number of CPN-referred bills. We have multiple agendas today, so we are going to recess this and take up a vote on a different agenda recess. Okay, good morning and welcome. This is the Friday, February 7th, 2025, 10:01 a.m. agenda, joint agenda in Conference Room 229 between the Senate CPN Committee and the Senate EDT Committee to consider SB 1601 relating to condominiums. We worked out some proposed language, but it's not quite ready yet, so the recommendation is to defer decision-making on this measure until Tuesday, February 11th, 2025, at 1:06 p.m. in Conference Room...
229.
Yeah, in this room, Conference Room 229. And we're adjourned. Okay, we're back reconvening for this Friday, February 7th, 2025, 9:50 a.m. agenda in Conference Room 229. The first measure is SB 1166 relating to insurance. This measure requires that property and casualty insurance rates that incorporate historical or projected losses from fire or catastrophic hazards be conditioned on agreement by the insurer to file and litigate subrogation claims against responsible parties. It also recommends... It also requires the Hawaii Property Insurance Association to file and litigate subrogation claims against certain responsible parties for claims paid by the insurer for losses that are attributable to climate change. It also requires insurance rates to account for proceeds obtained by the association through those subrogation claims. First up, DCCA Insurance Division in opposition. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jerry Bump, acting insurance commissioner, will stand on our written testimony in opposition to this bill.
Thank you very much. Attorney General's Office with comments.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Andrew Kim, Deputy Attorney General. We provided written comments regarding concerns on the constitutional concerns and also the statute being vague and also it appears to conflict with state law and case law. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Insurers Council with comments.
Yes, stand on our comments.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. That's all the registered testimony we have. I believe we have Mr. Jones online. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Dave Jones. I served as California's Insurance Commissioner from 2011 through 2018, and I'm testifying in support of 1166 as amended. In order to address concerns that were raised by the Hawaii Division of Insurance, amendments have been proposed for this measure, which essentially changed the measure from mandating to encouraging that insurers bring claims against responsible parties. The thrust of the measure is to try to make sure that insurance is more affordable and available in Hawaii by encouraging insurers to take advantage of the opportunity to recover damages from third parties whose actions or negligence are actually underlying the catastrophic events that are causing more losses. Insurers have historically used subrogation in other contexts. They've used it successfully in claims against the opioid industry, against the tobacco industry, and against utilities in California and other jurisdictions. And as we know, there's a pending matter in Hawaii where insurers are raising subrogation claims. They've yet to use it, though, against oil and gas industry participants. And so what the bill does is encourage that they do so. We got some very useful input from the Division of Insurance, and we're working on amendments that would provide for reporting mechanism on this. The bill also importantly provides for a private right of action for individuals and businesses in Hawaii to bring claims directly to recover damages associated with catastrophic events that are driven by responsible parties. So we appreciate all the input from various parties. As I say, the author, Senator Lee, has proposed amendments that I believe have been provided to the committee. And I support the bill as proposed to be amended and appreciate the Chair and the members indulging me in providing comments on the bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Mr. Levitt online. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair, members of the committee. My name is Gordon Levitt, and I'm here today on behalf of the Center for Climate Integrity, a nonprofit dedicated to empowering communities and officials to hold major oil and gas corporations accountable for decades of deception to the public about the connection between their products and climate change. Will stand on our written testimony, but I want to mention a few points today in support of Senate Bill 1166 and the amendments we're proposing. So first off, the proposed amendments to the legislation make it optional and not mandatory to pursue cost recovery lawsuits against the fossil fuel industry from the insurance companies. The proposed amendment also provide private pathways for individuals, businesses, and insurance companies themselves to recover losses that are connected to their policies or their larger business as it relates to climate change. And then finally, I just want to mention that this is a really promising way to help recover the growing losses and help limit costly rate hikes that are driving up the cost of living for residents of Hawaii. Thank you, and we urge the committee to support Senate Bill 1166 as amended.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify on this measure? In the room or on the Internet? Okay, members, questions? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next measure on the agenda, SB 1506 relating to professional land surveyors. This measure establishes a statute of repose prohibiting the commencement of a civil action against a professional land surveyor if 10 years has elapsed since the latter of the date of completion of a contract or final payment for land surveying work. We'll start with the DCCA Board of Professional Engineers, Architects, Surveyors, and Landscape Architects with comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Sheena Choi, Executive Officer of the Board. The Board stands on its written testimony, and I would just like to report that the Board did have a meeting yesterday, February 6, where they formally voted to appreciate the intent of the bill. Thank you, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Attorney General's Office with comments. Good morning.
I'm the Chair, members of the committee. My name is Susan Wong on behalf of the department. The department has submitted comments that we have concerns regarding the constitutionality of the bill, that it may violate the equal protection under the United States Constitution and the Hawaii State Constitution for real property owners. Other than that, I'm here to answer. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Joanne Williamson in support.
Thank you, Senators. I stand by my written testimony.
Thank you very much for standing on your testimony. Meyer Cummins in support.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I just wanted to testify to clarify some arguments against this bill. First, the amendment, excuse me, the argument that simply digitizing records will reduce the burden of keeping them doesn't have merit. Even if surveyors were to digitize all their records, contracts and communications, files degrade, hard drives die, servers need replacing, and operating systems become obsolete. 30 to 40 years of record keeping, even digital record keeping, is no small task and costs no small amount of money. And for legacy firms, this burden becomes even more untenable. Second, claims against surveyors for surveys that are more than a decade old will largely be based on faded memories or lost evidence. But the allegation will still need to be rebutted, and witnesses to the original surveys may be dead, out of state, or no longer associated with the firm. The difficulty of litigating these kinds of decades-old disputes is enormous, particularly on small businesses and sole proprietorships. Third, people don't realize that once a surveyor finishes a survey, there is nothing stopping anyone or anything from disturbing or destroying the monuments that were set. They need to be visible and durable, but they are not indestructible. The likelihood of interference over time is high, and the best method to combat this phenomenon is record keeping, which, as I have noted, grows more and more difficult over time. Fourth, 19 states already provide surveyors with a statute of repose, with the average being just seven years. Hawaii would not be alone in this. Further, under HRS 657-8, Hawaii already establishes the 10-year statute of repose for actions for damages based on construction to improve real property. Surveyors are merely asking for parity with construction professionals. And finally, indefinite liability for possible claims will make it less likely for surveyors to participate in large-scale disaster recovery projects. Even as we speak, surveyors are needed to replace tens of thousands of boundary monuments for thousands of properties in Lahaina based on very little monumentation remaining after the cleanup. I have no doubt that surveyors will take every precaution and use only the best practices to reconstruct whole subdivisions and neighborhoods, but there's bound to be gaps and overlaps that ultimately reveal themselves over the decades to come. Holding surveyors indefinitely liable for the inevitables unfair and only reduce their participation when it is needed most. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's all the live registered testimony we have on this measure. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Okay, seeing none, I forgot on the. Well, let me just note for the record, written testimony in support from Leo Bell and Clayton Konashiro. Also in support, Victor Rosgado and Alika Garo, Jacob Teeter, Jill Charles Jr., Eric Konashiro. All in support, and late testimony from Lynn Sun in support, Ken Nishihara in support, and Arthur Savigny in support. Vice Chair for a question.
I guess to the Attorney General's Office, it struck me as a little bit odd that the department is raising some constitutional issues when this is an administration proposal.
Yes, but we're only looking at the constitutionality of the bill.
So did another department draft the bill?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's not identified as a governor's bill, but it is a VR.
Okay, sorry. My apologies.
Senator Richards.
Yeah, Attorney General.
Good morning.
Good morning. You raised the concern of a potential constitutional problem. Specifically, what are you saying? That there is an indefinite timeline that could be allowed?
What we're saying is that a real property owner would not be protected equally under the law, that they wouldn't have the right to, you know, recoup any losses or, I believe, go after the land surveyors if there's any defects and they're being sued.
So to cure this equal protection clause violation would be to simply extend the same immunity to the landowner on which a monument is located, right? What you're kind of saying, telling us?
Yeah, yes.
All right, cool.
All right, thanks, Chair.
Wait, so I guess I'm trying to understand the what the risk is here that we're incorporating if we were to do that?
I guess the land surveying issues usually come up when some event happens, and the 10-year limitation on pursuing any claims against the land surveyors would preclude the landowner from, you know, recouping losses that he suffered or if he's being sued in an action.
For a property line dispute or for some associated dispute?
It could be on boundaries or other matters that come up.
I guess I'm trying to understand in what situation a landowner would be held liable for a survey dispute.
Well, I guess some of the examples that are cited is, you know, in case that if there was a land surveyor that did a survey and something was built, like a drainage line or something on the property, and then it turns out that it's erroneous, that that's not the boundary, that the landowner could be liable. But then he could also, you know, go against the land surveyors. But these events usually don't come up immediately, like, you know, until some event might happen in the future.
Well, I guess to Senator McKelvey's point, if we just put the landowners in this, it's that any potential litigation would still be about the property lines of landowners. So it doesn't necessarily release anybody from any. I don't know, I don't understand how to release.
I'm looking at a torches context. This good guy over here says, okay, you can build a monument on there, and coming cars and hits, and they're like, oh, no, it's completely on their land, right? And so, but I wasn't thinking in your, that's a good point, Chair, is the property disputes, the application of the law of property disputes is what unintended consequences could be in this area.
I don't see how the dispute over whether the survey was good or not makes any difference in a property dispute. If you have a property dispute, you determine the property lines through discovery, and then the litigation proceeds accordingly, right? I guess, because I'm inclined at this point to, maybe I'm in the bill as being suggested by Senator McKelvey, we just take this survey business out of, you know, just take this survey business out of the dispute that might potentially arise in the future. You know, without taking more time to look into that. Are there any immediate objections that come to mind?
Well, all I can say is that the real property owners who rely on surveying companies to accurately set the boundaries are affected. You know, in the cases where some event happens, say, the monument falls on somebody and, you know, it's not really on their property, then the land surveyors could still be held liable, and the land property can go, the land property owners, the real property owners can go after the land surveyors. But a lot of times, you know, the mistakes, I guess, or errors perhaps that come up will not be immediately obvious. And so the landowners would be prejudiced if they're, you know, not able to recoup, you know, their losses if they're sued under this bill.
All right. Members, any other questions? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you very much. SB 1648 relating to power outages. This measure establishes requirements for compensation to utility customers following a power outage. DCCA Division of Consumer Advocacy with comments. Good morning.
DCCA stands on its comments.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Public Utilities Commission with comments.
Aloha, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee. I was Max Baruch, I'm an economist at the PUC here on behalf of Leo Assumption. The PUC stands on its written testimony and is available for any questions.
Thank you. Hawaiian Electric in opposition. Good morning.
Good morning. Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Jack Ralph, testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in opposition to SB 1648. I'll largely stand on our written testimony. I wanted to emphasize, Hawaiian Electric appreciates the intent of this bill but believes the bill is unnecessary and may have unintended consequences. The bill is unnecessary because the existing regulatory scheme is a fair balance that requires compensation for outages within our reasonable control, while recognizing that there are practical limits on what utilities can do, given the associated costs. The bill could have unintended consequences. For example, during certain conditions like a public safety power shut-off, time isn't the only factor in restoring power. Safety is a big consideration. We may not be able to restore power while the weather event is ongoing, and then after that, need to conduct inspections to ensure that power can be safely restored. And utilities shouldn't be penalized for safe practices in those instances. I'd also note, we've read the Public Utilities Commission's comments, and we would support the opening of a docket regarding this matter. And I'd stand for any questions the committee has.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have written testimony submitted by Kauai Island Utility Cooperative in opposition, Lake Des Moines in opposition. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, questions? Vice Chair.
I guess one question for the HECO representative. I believe, you know, this measure was introduced partly in recognition of many of the hardships that businesses in the downtown Chinatown area experienced during that last outage. And, you know, while you have existing procedures in place, I think for many of the businesses that were affected, the problem is that, you know, extended time to correct and resolve the difference, I mean, the outage, means that some of them had to shut down. So this is looking for ways to establish a more immediate methodology for providing some recompense to those businesses, especially that are affected, that are unable to sustain a long period of shutdown without ability to recover.
Certainly, we are concerned with the time of outages and with the businesses that had significant costs.
Do you have an estimate of the number of claims that have been filed and the amount that has been authorized for payment?
I don't have that information in front of me today, but I'd be happy to get it to the committee members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Members, any other questions?
Yeah, Chair.
Senator Richards.
Turn back around. Yeah, you get popular on these things. What is your policy for compensation concerning this right now as we speak?
Policies for compensation are governed by Tariff Rule 16. I believe it's a similar rule across all three consolidated companies. And it requires compensation for losses associated with outages that are within our reasonable control. That determine claims are made to the company, and if a customer has an issue with the claim, they can raise it with the Public Utilities Commission and then appeal that to the courts.
So the metric, who makes that determination of being reasonable? Is that a PUC determination?
The initial determination is made by Hawaiian Electric. The claims are raised directly with the company.
And so, and the backup to that, the appeal, is then to the courts or to PUC?
I believe the first step would be to raise a formal or informal complaint with the Public Utilities Commission. the Public Utilities Commission, and I believe that has happened in several instances regarding the Chinatown outage.
Yeah, because I'm sensitive to what Senator Fukala talked about downtown businesses. I'm from the Big Island, and we came to the other side. Sometimes it's too dangerous for you guys to get up on the poles in our area, so, and I'm sensitive to that. Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions on this measure? Okay, we'll move on to SB 1619 relating to the Cosmetology Licensure Compact. This measure authorizes the governor to enter into a cosmetology licensure compact on behalf of the state. That's pretty much what it does. Let me see here. The Board of Barbering and Cosmetology online with comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Carrie Sheahan. I'm the executive officer for the Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. The board will stand on its written comments, and I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. The Future of the Beauty Industry Coalition in support.
Yep, my name is Leslie.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you? My name is Leslie Rusty with the Future of the Beauty Industry Coalition. I have submitted written comments and stand on those comments in support of 1619, and I'm available for any questions.
I'm fine. Thank you for standing on your comments. Council of State Governments offering comments. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to be here today. I'll just stand on my written testimony, but I do want to note that because the Council of State Governments is a membership organization for elected and appointed state officials, we testified today as neutral or comments only, but we stand behind our process and appreciate the committee's consideration of this legislation. I'm available for any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Care is Angela Young with comments.
Not available on Zoom care.
Okay. Let me see. We also have written testimony submitted by the United States Department of Defense in support. Jacob Winchek, Ted Kafalas for the Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, and Sarah Yee. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? Members, any questions? Senator McKelvey.
I don't know if the cosmetology guys are online still, are they? They took off? Okay, well.
They are available on Zoom.
Yeah.
They're there?
Yep. Ms. Sheahan?
No, you know what, Chair, it's okay. In the interest of time, I just wanted to note in the, that the future, one of the testifiers talked about the frequency of testing as possible bottleneck in the pipeline, and so anyway, that's what my question revolved around. Anyway, you continue. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions, we'll move to SB 1620. Relating to natural hair braiding, this measure exempts natural hair braiders from licensing requirements under certain conditions. First up, Board of Barbering and Cosmetology.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. I apologize for not being able to respond to the question earlier. I was having technical difficulties. The Board of Barbering and Cosmetology stands on its written comments, and I will attempt to be here for questions or follow-up. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney General's Office with comments. Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm reading off the wrong paper. Institute for Justice in support. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair and members of the committee. My name is Courtney Fontaine, and I am with the Institute for Justice, a nonprofit law firm that fights for economic liberty, and we strongly support SB 1620, which would exempt hair braiders from unnecessary cosmetology licensing. Thirty-five states have already recognized that hair braiding does not require a government license, yet under current Hawaii law, braiders must complete 1,250 hours of training, most of which is irrelevant to braiding, at a cost of up to $17,000 just to make an honest living. The only approved program on Maui barely covers braiding at all, focusing instead on cutting, coloring, and chemical treatments. These excessive requirements make it nearly impossible for braiders to legally earn a living. Hawaii has some of the most burdensome licensing laws for braiders in the country. SB 1620 is a simple, common sense reform that would allow braiders to work legally without unnecessary government interference, just as 35 states have already done. The bill does not compromise consumer safety. Natural hair braiding is a safe practice that has been passed down for generations, and complaints against braiders are extremely rare. SB 1620 also ensures that salons offering braiding services maintain proper sanitation and workplace standards. It's time for Hawaii to expand economic opportunity. I urge you to support SB 1620 and give natural hair braiders the freedom to work. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Connor Norris for the NEI Regulatory Research Center with comments. Good morning.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. My name is Connor Norris. I'm the Director of Labor Policy at the NEI Regulatory Research Center at West Virginia University. To save time, I'd like to stand on my written testimony with just one point of emphasis. Virginia passed a similar law back in 2012, and in-depth research found that it led to a substantial increase in new hair braiders and especially more opportunities for smaller owner-operated beauty salons, so it was able to help increase entrepreneurship and increase employment without sacrificing consumer safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We also have late testimony from Katulani Flores, Terry Chang.
Not available on Zoom care.
Leslie Rusty in support.
Leslie Rusty again with the Future of the Beauty Industry Coalition. I'm standing on my testimony and here for questions.
Thank you for standing on your testimony. We also have written support from Sarah Yee, Kiara Corpus Butihi, and Moki Hana. Member, is there anyone else who'd like to testify? Members, questions? Moving on to the last measure on the agenda, SB 1621 relating to nail technicians. This measure requires the DCCA to adopt rules establishing a license and corresponding requirements specifically for nail technicians separate from a general cosmetologist's license. Board of Barbering and Cosmetology with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. I apologize, I'm having more technical difficulties. I cannot get my video to work. My name is Carrie Sheahan with the Board of Barbering and Cosmetology. The board will stand on its written testimony regarding nail technicians, and I am here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Attorney General's Office with comments.
I don't know why this isn't working.
Good morning, Deputy Attorney General Andrew Kim. We provide written comments, just noting that there's already a separate license type for nail technicians. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Leslie Rusty in support.
Again, I'm here to answer questions, and I will stand on my written testimony.
Thank you very much. We also have written testimony in support from Sarah Yee, Grassroots Institute of Hawaii, and Terry Chang, again, all in support. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify? Members, questions? Okay, we'll recess for decision-making. This is our 9:50 a.m., Friday, February 7, 2025, agenda in room 229 to make recommendations and decisions on this agenda. The first measure is SB 1166 relating to insurance. There's a proposed Senate draft that has been offered that I'm inclined to proceed with, so what we'd like to do is defer decision-making on that measure to, you know what, we'll defer it to Wednesday, February 12, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. here in room 229, and we will post the proposed SD so that everyone can review it before the vote. The next measure is SB 1506 relating to professional land surveyors. The recommendation on this measure is to pass with amendments and to address the comments provided by the Attorney General's Office. We will add the landowner to the statute of repose along with the surveyor, and to keep the discussion going, we'll defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the CPN members present, are there any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB 1648 relating to power outages. The recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting amendments to address the DCCA's comments. There are also some technical non-substantive amendments, and we'll defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Chair. Senator Richards.
Yeah, I definitely hear the concerns from the consumer side, but I'm also very sensitive to our, the Lions Been Employing Electric, and I think we need to keep this conversation going. I'm going to support it, but with reservations.
So noted. Any other comments, questions? Okay, if not, Vice Chair for the vote, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey?
Reservations.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 1619 relating to the Cosmetology Licensure Compact. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. There are technical, the amendments are technical in nature. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, are there any voting with reservations or objections?
No.
Thank you, Senator Awa, and your measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB 1620 relating to natural hair braiding. The recommendation is to pass this measure unamended. Any discussion? Okay, Vice Chair, passing unamended. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the CPN members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The last measure on this agenda is SB 1621 relating to nail technicians. The recommendation is to pass with amendments. Let me see. Oh, the recommendation is to exempt nail technicians from licensing. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Of the CPN members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you. We will adjourn this. Okay, we're back on this Friday, February 7, 2025, 9:46 a.m. agenda in room 229. First measure is SB 146 relating to condominiums. Recommendation, it's still some work we need to do on this measure, so the recommendation is to defer decision-making on this bill until Wednesday, February 12, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in room 229. Same recommendation for the next measure, SB 147 relating to condominiums. We will defer decision-making to Wednesday, February 12, 2025, at 9:30 a.m. in room 229. The next measure is SB 253 relating to condominium reserves. The recommendation is to pass with the defective effective date of July 1, 2050. Members, any comments or questions? Seeing none, Vice Chair, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Vice Chair also votes aye. Senator McKelvey?
Aye.
Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
Aye.
Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB 385 relating to condominiums. This is the Condo Documents Bill. So, members, the recommendation here is to pass with amendments to require associations to provide governing documents as amended to owners upon request in print or electronic form at no cost, and I'm going to recommend that we keep the date on this measure effective upon approval. Members, any discussion?
No.
I think email is reasonable. Okay, if there are no comments, Vice Chair for the vote, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Thank you. Of the members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. Next measure is SB 801 relating to managing agents, and I will yield to the Vice Chair for proposed amendments.
Okay. Based on the testimony that was received during the hearing, the proposal is to add a new classification for managing agents to be termed community association manager, means an individual who possesses a manager credential issued by a nationwide community association management industry group, and this would be applicable primarily to those properties located in counties with more than 500,000 residents and in, and have in buildings with more than 100 units.
Okay, we're good. Yeah?
Okay.
And defective date to foster conversation, July 1, 2050. Any discussion, members? Okay, thank you for those amendments. Vice Chair, Chair votes aye.
Okay. Of the CPN members present, any voting with reservations or objections?
No.
Thank you, Senator Awa. No vote. Measure is adopted.
Thank you very much. The next measure is SB 802 relating to insurance. The recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting the DCCA's proposed amendments that remove duplicative and potentially inconsistent requirements, and to defect the effective date of this measure to July 1, 2050. Any discussion? Seeing none, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
Of the CPN members present, any voting with reservations or objections? Hearing none, measure is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure is SB 804 relating to insurance for Hawaii condominium properties. The recommendation is to pass with amendments, adopting technical non-substantive changes, and defecting the effective date of the measure to July 1, 2050. Members, any discussion? Seeing none, passing with amendments. Chair votes aye.
On this measure, I have, I do have some concerns. However, I will be voting with reservations. Thank you. Senator McKelvey?
Yes.
Okay, Senator Richards?
Aye.
Senator Awa?
No.
Thank you. Measure is adopted.
Wait, sorry. Ah, shoot, sorry, sorry, sorry. That was a yes.
It was a yes? Okay. Measure is adopted.
Thank you. The last measure is SB 1372 relating to condominium associations' operating budget. This measure was put forward by the administration by the, at the request of the Convo Task Force because there's an open question as to whether the statute allows or disallows this, but after having heard the testimony, I don't like this bill. I recommend we defer it.
Yeah.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you.